And I'm the oldest of these brothers.
Not international, you can say it. I think that's what's going to happen. Totally national together. I told her, I told her I'll ask. Just the moment, because I can't, I'm lying.
Uh huh.
If I go again, I don't know.
See this gentleman right here?
Yeah.
I will always stand next to him. Did you hear my public comment?
Yeah, I would.
I did too.
You guys want to sit in the back? He turns up here.
That's the, that's the.
Oh, do it.
So do you want to hear something?
Just a little bit of intervention for you.
She was married to a man named Torres.
Denise, Denise, you're welcome here.
Where they're sitting. I want to get your shoes.
Which is weird, but they decided to see each other.
I didn't notice that. I didn't know that till right now.
Well, because I was up there.
I wonder why?
I went to go put Denise's ring down and I saw a phone there that says Nanette. I'm going, I was like, wait a minute.
I wonder, I wonder why? No, that's mine.
Oh, that's yours?
Yeah.
Are you ready, Diana? My problem is I have to come in.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. This is the second and regular meeting of the month of September of the Espinola City Council. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republican Party, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Pastor Paul Hara Mio, is he the leadest member of the congregation this evening? Would you like to come up here and ensure the light at the tables will keep? You can stand where you want at that.
All right. First of all, I want to thank you for the honor of receiving. Before I pray, I just want to say that I'm here as an average citizen of the beautiful Espinola Valley. And I have a lot of concerns about the situations that are going on in my community. And I think prayer and acknowledging God, first of all, and everything that we do in this community is very important. And that's why I feel it's an honor to be here, to represent the average citizen of the valley. And, and I, I just want to thank the mayor for this opportunity to lift our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support. As we begin this meeting, help us to engage in meaningful discussions, allowing us to grow closer together as a group and to nurture each other as a community and bond together as a community. Fill us with your grace, Lord. For God, as we make decisions that might affect us as citizens and the citizens outside of these four walls, it's very important that we acknowledge you first and foremost, and that we humble ourselves in your presence, Lord, during this time. Help us, Lord, to stay positive and to treat each other with respect and dignity, which we know is very important, because we're all children of God. We're all equal in your sight, Lord. And we just pray, God, that you can help each and every one of us to be respectful in every way with each other, Lord. And continue to remind us that all that we do here today, Lord, and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of the, of the truth and the greater glory of you and for a good service towards our community. We ask, Heavenly Father, that every word that we speak tonight, God, and everything that we do, would be to ultimately glorify your precious name. Heavenly Father, we thank you for blessing us with such a beautiful community. Help us, Lord. Help us to help you make this community a wonderful community, is what it's meant to be. We thank you, God, for the opportunity to be a part of such a beautiful place and help us to just take care of it for you, Lord, Heavenly Father. We thank you. I thank you, God, for all the wonderful people in this room this evening that have taken the time to be here to, to support and to try and better our community. We ask this, Heavenly Father, in the name of your son, Jesus, we pray. And we also amen.
Can we take a moment aside to recognize this fellow who passed away, Consoperino, this week? She was a light, small-time coworker at Councilor Diaz and Councilor on the side of the gas company. Also want to recognize Mr. Emery Mayestas of Chicos. Yes, Ms. Lawrence Hara Mio, passed away, a large giant of our community, such was who left us last night. Thank you. Thank you. The church please call the roll.
Mayor Potem, Justin Salazar Torres.
Present.
Counselor Felicia Archuleta Toya. Counselor Pedro Valdez. Counselor Peggy Sue Martinez. Counselor Samuel Ladue. Counselor Denise Benavides. Counselor Aaron Salazar. Counselor Nanette Rodriguez. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Do you have the agenda before you this evening?
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make the agenda with item A under the matter of the mayor to write after the approval of the agenda. The only reason is that I've got two littles here that got to get to practice, and this proclamation is for one of them.
Second, motion made to amend item, what is it? Item 6A to be after approval of the agenda, the alopecia proclamation. Motion made by Counselor Salazar Torres, second by Counselor Ladue. And we're all here, President Chambers, all up here, the motion's signed by my senior.
Aye.
The opposing, indicate. All right, thank you. Moving on to the alopecia proclamation. I want to thank Counselor Salazar, Mayor Potem, Salazar Torres for bringing this before us this evening to recognize a disorder that is very. I thought we just did now. We just did. I did a roll call because we're all in.
Yes, voicemail. Sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. It's a disorder that hits very close to home to the, to the mayor Potem. And so I would like to thank him for recognizing this and bringing this to the attention of the governing body. And official proclamation of the City of Espinola, New Mexico, USA. Counsel, Mayor Potem, would you like to do the honors?
Sure, you're welcome.
Thank you. Is it me? Is it you?
You want to use this?
I don't know if I need one, but.
Well, for the list, you know.
So, excuse me, sorry, I'm not in jail. But it's an official proclamation that it's a home for me, because my baby girl right there up in the front, she has alopecia areata. So it's been something since she was two years old and my wife and I have gone through and whatnot. And it's been, it's been a journey. But it states, official proclamation of the City of Espinola. Whereas alopecia is a condition that affects people of all ages, races, and genders, and includes a diverse group of causes such as the autoimmune disease disorder such as alopecia areata. And whereas September is recognized nationally as Alopecia Awareness Month, a time to increase public understanding of this condition, reduce stigma, and provide support to those who are affected. And whereas individuals living with alopecia demonstrate strength, resilience, and confidence in embracing their identities, whether with hair or without hair, with wigs, hats, or scarves, all valid and beautiful expressions of self. And whereas this month highlights the importance of empowerment and self-love by affirming that every person impacted by alopecia is worthy, strong, and celebrated. And whereas the City of Espinola recognizes the vital need to build supportive and understanding communities where individuals with alopecia can share their stories, raise awareness, and find connection and encouragement. And whereas the color blue symbolizes support for the alopecia community and wearing blue during September demonstrates solidarity with those who live with alopecia. And whereas continued education, advocacy, and research are essential to improving care, advancing treatment, and ensuring equitable understanding of alopecia in public health and society. Now therefore, Mayor John Ronan Behill, Mayor of the City of Espinola, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty-two and five as Alopecia Awareness Month in the City of Espinola, and encourage all citizens to learn more about alopecia, show compassion, and support to those affected, and join in efforts to foster awareness, inclus- inclusivity, and empowerment. Honoring Alopecia Awareness Month in the City of Espinola. Just to give a little background for those here, my beautiful daughter here, you see that she's got hair now. And she's got some blonde highlights. That all came in natural. A lot of folks think that they asked her to dye her hair or whatnot. No, it came in natural. Since she was two years old, she'd get dime-sized, nickel-sized bald patches. And then, you know, my good wife, thank God, she's great with hair, would work around it. And then, of course, about a year and a half, a few years ago, it went to a fifty-cent-sized piece right up here on top of her head. And then, within a matter of two weeks, it came, it came with a vengeance, and she totally went, went bald. And not only did she lose her head of hair, but hair on her eyebrows, her eyelashes. And as we educate ourselves in this, you know, you lose nasal hair, any sort of body hair. I was wondering why she had so many mocos running. And well, we, they educated us that's what happens. But thank God that it's coming back. It's growing back. Not that it won't happen again, because we're still, you know, doing studies and whatnot. But she's a champion and a beautiful adult. That is my baby girl. And this is my son Xavier. He's got football practice.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. We know, Counselor comments. Mayor Potem.
All right, thank you. Switch hats a little bit. First and foremost, on here, I want to thank Counselor Peggy Sue Martinez, whom I've sat by for the last approximately three and a half years. I want to thank him, Counselor Martinez, for serving in your role as Mayor Potem. I appreciate you. I appreciate your wisdom. I've learned from you. And some big shoes to fill, but I just want to tell you, thank you for your service. I do appreciate it. Secondly, the rumble strips on North McCurdy, I had some constituents call me and text me just a little bit ago. They are getting, the community's growing very frustrated and are asking for some action to be done. Even just, again, as we mentioned, getting some bags of asphalt and start some little patches and stuff like that. Just after that, we don't need to go into a huge endeavor of cutting the road and all that stuff that we did when we did it with the first set on both heading north and south. That would help out a lot. I've noticed the difference is just that first set. But we need to move on. The community's growing frustrated. And then, secondly, get on code enforcement. I know we've got some city manager stuff coming up later on, but we need code enforcement with these wonderful rains that we've had, which is great, but with rain comes weeds. And we have some, some properties that need some taking care of. So we need code enforcement to look at that. But other than that, that is it. Thank you.
Mayor Potem, Counselor checked up to Elijah. Elijah's been about two weeks, because he's out this week. He's been here, you know, about two weeks.
On the roll.
That's what I understand. He's not cold, but I think it was about two weeks, he said. He's out this week. So is Daniel here? Okay. Counselor Ladue.
I just wanted to also thank Mayor Potem, Peggy Sue Martinez, for the years of service. And we appreciate everything she did in that role. And we may not always seem eye-to-eye, but I appreciate her willingness to serve in that capacity. And I also wanted to echo the rumble strip situation, so I'm glad that Mayor Potem brought that up. I also want to highlight, there's been some issues of homelessness in near East Jeron, as well as some issues near the Faribbín Post Office area. Once again, I've also heard some issues with some encampments near Los Fargo. And I think that that's a continuing issue. I'm also concerned, I haven't really seen any implementation of the shopping cart ordinance yet. I think that needs to start going underway, particularly with, I know part of the ordinance is to have serial numbers on every cart. And since I've been shopping, I still haven't seen that implemented. So I think that's something that we need to look into. Our ordinances are only as powerful as our enforcement, and I think that we need to keep that in mind. I also have heard that the Dollar Tree may be closing, which I think is unfortunate. I, I think that this is just a continuing symptom of the rising crime in our community. So I really want to thank the governor in her efforts to step up and help us in that regard. I'm hoping that the deployment of the National Guard that was announced yesterday bears some good fruit. I had a chance to listen to a little bit of the committee hearing on that. And I'm hopeful that work can get done. I had conversations with the chief about it. I'm also glad that the chief had conversations with Acting U.S. Attorney, Ray Ellison. And I also thank him for inviting me to listen in on that and hear about some of the plans they have moving forward. I think that with the federal government and the state government starting to take this issue seriously, we can make some serious headwind on this crime issue that has been building for some time. But that said, there's still some things that are really concerning to me on the social services side. There was a report that suicide rates have dramatically increased in the state of New Mexico. And as someone who's from a family who's seen suicide firsthand, I can tell you that it's very difficult on the family members and often friends of those people as well. And, you know, when I was in high school, Coacu Valley High School, there was a national, you know, trend and focus on the fact that there were so many suicides at our school. And I worry that this increasing trend of suicides could continue to have a domino effect. So I, hopefully, we can get some services out there to make sure that people know that there's help out there. And if you need to talk to somebody, please do. I know the state set up a nine-eight-eight line. Please, if you feel hopeless, if you feel like you need someone to talk to, please reach out to somebody. There are people who care about you. Life is worth living. And as the good pastor said, we need to just pray for our community on that front. Overdose races, rates have also dramatically increased. The New Mexico Department of Health issued a warning about Santa Fe and Rio Arriba County being directly impacted by this. I'm also hoping I can find some more solutions to some of the emergency issues that we're experiencing. Naleo was kind enough to invite me to their Emergency Management Conference later this week at, you know, Paso. And I'm going to head out there tomorrow evening, and hopefully I can bring back some ideas. And I've already been in talks with Assistant Chief Licker Shannon and Chief Garcia about it. See if I, if I see anything there, I'll bring it back. So thank you.
Counselor Felicia, quick report.
I wanted to bring up a couple of topics for this weekend, the Centennial Celebration. I wanted to ask about counselors, for if you could help at all. We would appreciate it. Beginning at twelve on Friday, Diana Prue will start getting things set up. We need help with pointing vendors into the right locations where they need to be, just upon the three designated areas. We also need help from code enforcement to help ensure that those vendors are permitted correctly. And we also need help from fire and PD, someone who is an authority to help with capacity levels and enforce that, to make sure that we're handling the event as safely and securely as possible. And also, if, not to remind the council that we put a team together for the Spirit Days. So that's really exciting. So those of you that offered or agreed to be on the team, it's starting at nine AM at Valdez Park. And we will have our team t-shirts there. So I'm hoping to see all of you there. And we can do your stretches, eat your weedy's, and come prepared to have a good time. And then the rest of the weekend, you know, if we could just have counsel there as much as possible to help in any capacity. Last ask is, we're hoping to have agreemental for the folks that are coming to do the entertainment. So we're asking council if we could help donate snacks and drinks, so that we can get that set up behind somewhere there for this stage. That's it. Thanks.
Counselor Aaron Salazar.
Yes, I just want to thank all the ones that coordinated all the help this weekend on the walk, the Fentanyl Walk. There was great attendance, a lot of testimonies. Thanks to the police, our department for their coordinating the traffic control, everything else, everything. Well, it was a big attendance, a lot of attendance, a lot of people around. Just want to thank them all for their walking. I think they're going to make sure they're yearly seeing, hopefully. So just thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to quickly, a quick update. I was at the New Mexico that was in so fast rate. And I took some time to meet with some of the mining staff, and they changed some of their rules. So the city of Espinola's housing and deed is still good and not expired. So that was the news for us. In addition to that, they're going to supply the template for an ordinance that MFA requires. So once they receive that, if that could be turned out, it must be approved by them before it can be approved by our legal counsel. But I'll make sure that, once they have it completed, I will get that to us and make a note on my calendar.
Counselor Yenier.
I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Counselor Peggy Sue Martinez for the many years as Mayor Potem. Counselor Martinez, I think that you are one of the smartest women I know. You're dedicated to the city and to constituents of this city. And I admire you and your passion for everything that we need in this city. Thank you for the many years that you served.
Anyone else? At this time, I want to recognize some special people have worked to put together this weekend's events, and they've worked very hard. I namely want to recognize someone very special who's worked extremely hard, and that's Ms. Diana Pali, our Chief Deputy Clerk. She's worked phenomenal. One with the hat for Ms. Esperanza Sandoval, who left the city. But we are so grateful for your work to move forward and plan all the events as the staff lays on. And Ms. Nanette Valerio, our Arts and Culture Specialist. You guys have worked phenomenal to put everything together. Nanette, you've been really working hard the last two weeks to put together the art festival. And this backgrounds of old historic photos of Espinola through their eyes and of old historic photos of Espinola through their eyes and the eyes of the student participants there. And so we're so grateful for that. We look forward to them being unveiled to all of us on Friday. We haven't seen them. And so I want to start off by acknowledging and thanking them. And is Christian Madrid Estrada here? And Mr. Roger Montoya. And Mr. Roger Montoya. We look forward to, to those boards, and they're building those boards for our community.
Roger Montoya. Yeah, it was quite beautiful to see the youth respond, oh, we're going to hate a bunch of old buildings. It wasn't very sexy to them. But during the process of researching and visiting the sites today that they're making from the fifties or the thirties, it was really insightful. And it gave them a vision perhaps for the future of them, because they are excited to be in 2021. So thank you for the opportunity. Moving on, it's, it's honored to support.
Thank you. So we're very excited to see that. And so, yeah. So I want to recognize, and please just, when I call your name up, if you can come on up and just stand if you're hearing the audience, Mr. Andrew Mayestas. Ms. Deborah Archuleta. Ms. Deborah Archuleta. Randy Prado from Centennial Arts Festival. Mr. Paul Nickens. Stefan Gomez. Christine Bustos. Felicia Archuleta. Federica Des. Adam Encinas. Kelly Nichols from the Chamber of Commerce. Tito Terraza from the Fiesta de la Ciudad. Nanette Valerio. Ms. Brenda Duran Marquez. Cantrell Stafford, I don't see him here in the audience. Carla Ann Martinez. I got right here already. Again, to Diana, Good Times Heart Club. And I want to recognize somebody who's worked very diligently on behalf of the Centennial as a volunteer for our community. She came with an idea from her work about doing a raffle for a lowrider for their for one of their charity give back events in our community. And I told her we were working on planning the city centennial this year. She took that initiative and ran with it. And she's been working very hard to sell multiple tickets throughout northern New Mexico. She's also worked very hard with the Centennial, helping with all our events as well. And that's Ms. Eventro Nero from Del Marca. I'd like to thank all the members of the Centennial Committee for all their hard work to put together this year's event. They've been working very diligently. We still need help on this weekend. If there's anybody that can come and help assist us this weekend, we really appreciate it. Thank you again. Thank you for your diligence and commitment to our community to celebrate its 100th anniversary. Thank you all. All right, moving on to public comment. Madam Clerk.
We have Dani Martinez.
Is the lighting on?
I don't think it's working.
Okay. Yeah, I think unfortunately. That's weird, Diane. Is it because the computer screen's closed?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, go ahead, Chief.
Honorable Mayor, Miracle Trent, over in the audience. I said before, you, oh, because I'm really concerned. One of the biggest things that I wanted to, you know, tell you guys personally is, you know, you guys are seeing everything from the outside in, okay? But you guys aren't seeing it from the inside out, which is us, the employees, okay? So at this time, our employees are operating without clear guidance or directions due to the absence of a city manager. Without this internship, staff members are left uncertain or on priorities, responsibilities, and accountability. This has led to departments and employees blaming each other when tasks are not completed, creating confusion and lowering overall effectiveness. Examples of that would be fire department gets blamed every time a hybrid is open or a line busts. We have our judge and our police department who are without a lawyer to run their things that are there. Our mayor has done his job. He has already two, two people in front of you to appoint as a city manager. I don't see people lining up who wants to be a city manager. The one thing that I could tell you, Lauren, is here, she could, she'd retire, she's willing to take this in for the next five months or six months. Yeah, like I say, you know, you guys had your last two weeks, so we could do your things about how you want to judge this lady or what she did in the past. This lady is known for what she did for the county of Rio Arriba. Give her that credit. Whatever we have done in the past is in our past. We cannot change that. I asked you guys, you know, you guys to really look at this point, because like I say, you guys are going into executive session. Let's do the transparency. Whatever you're going to say or talk about, this Lauren here, you know, she said she's cared, you know, for you guys to talk and to better receive. So as a city manager, it's urgent, we need it to provide structure, oversight, and leadership so the city operations can move forward in a coordinated and productive way. You know, we see you guys asking, you know, in your project about the rumbles on the street and getting them. So, you know, for who are you talking to? The staff here?
No, say.
Three minutes here. We're going to do three minutes. So thank you for listening to me.
Did you bring my shirts? Next is Bethany Bradley.
Good evening, everyone. Just a little brief statement. So I wanted to bring up a couple of points. I know that our bills are going up again because I've noticed my water bill and sewage and trash bill. If our bills are going to keep going up, I believe that we should have water that we can actually drink safely. Because personally, I end up extremely sick every time I drink city water. I mean, this is a, that's a problem. If you're going to charge us for so much for bills, you need to make stuff so we can actually drink it, and then we don't have to spend extra money to go get filtered water or get filters for our sink and have to buy water coolers to keep in our house so that we have safe drinking water. I feel like I'm in Michigan sometimes. Just saying. Also, so a very disturbing thing was brought to my attention because unfortunately, I had to care for a dog who was killed by two pit bulls not that long ago. And I received a phone call asking me if I'd do body care for the dog that was killed. The update from the owner of said dog, whose 16-year-old child watched two pit bulls break through a fence, two fences, not just one, but two, and kill his dog. The dogs are now back at this person's house. And this woman has a two-year-old child and is terrified to allow her two-year-old to go outside and play because she doesn't know what those dogs are now capable of. This beautiful young gentleman thinks about every day, has to watch his, these two dogs next door, and lives his life terrified of what's going to happen next. This is not the first time that I've had to care for somebody's pet who was killed by another dog in this area. The problem is, it's irresponsible owners. And, and just the laws in this town, which, you know, we're working on. But also the fact that the judge made it a point to allow these two dogs back to this owner who was already irresponsible and is due any moment. How's she going to be able to take care of these two big 80-pound pit bulls? This is a problem in the city. There are some people who just shouldn't own dogs. And I'm going to make that, do you have any other?
I needed to make an announcement too. If you're here to speak for public hearing, you don't need to sign in there. But if you're here to speak for public comment about any other agenda items, you don't need to sign in over here with the clerk. And so, okay. Madam Clerk?
Isaac P.
Well, I'm going to wait for the public hearing.
Steven.
Are you okay? Did he jump? We're here to have a conversation. You don't have to talk back. We're going to give Lauren anywhere between $100 and $200 grand for city manager for the next six months. Check this out. I will propose it for you. You appoint me as interim city manager for the next six months. You and I will work together. Your gente will make memes of me too. I become a government employee. I become a public servant. All you have to do is pay me $50 grand a year, okay? Not asking more for $100 grand. I'm going to ask you for $50 grand. I don't need any benefits. I don't need no para. I don't need any of that. We can work together. We can squash the beef. You hire me as an appointee. We don't have to go through Lauren to do any of that. We can, how about, does that follow? Plus, I can get the five votes. If you appoint me, I can get the five votes right away. I just need five votes. I know five people will vote for me for interim city manager. Anyways, on the real note, you guys are here. Because you have a lot of people. And they're here for your business, John. Remember last time I was here, I told you you were going to deep dive your house and use it in your traffic cannabis? I believe you're in violation with the alcohol and weed, and I've since reading this stuff up now. With that being said, I hope you're not on edibles. I think everyone here in the governing body should take drug tests. If they force their employees to take drug tests, I think public service elected officials should take drug tests as well. I don't think it should be given one or the other in all to me. With that being said, fuck you, Peggy. Fuck you, John. Pedro, let's see how you vote tonight. I hear that you're against liquor. Let's see, let's see how you vote. Let's see you jump on John's side or not. Let's see how your two colors come out tonight, without a debate.
Ernest.
Well, can you, the speaker of all senior, but I changed my mind now that I heard Bethany talk about the water bill. I'm paying like $78 more a month. No, $30, $35. You know, most of those are seniors. Two people. You know, if you're going to raise the water bill, raise it. The hospitals, casinos, the stores. To me, $2,000, you still got to pay. But what I heard, I heard that only two people from here voted against raising that bill. And the rest voted, raise it. Okay, well, what? What I heard, you know, the benefits of treatment plan. The lift stations, the pumps, all that. My dad is tired of the wastewater treatment plan. No, we get all this money from the, what we do is still getting it, beautifying the park, which is pretty. The landscapes, the ranchito, everything. Yeah, but first, I don't know if you've got money saved for the pumps. If you don't, one of them pumps break. You know, the other thing that I wanted to really come and talk about was I don't know why, I'm not saying you're wrong, but you know who you are. Just that jealousy and not helping, like, we should be involved in doing this, do that. I'm proud. Grow up, your butt, and I'm not going to just bring that, hey, Peggy, just do this. I'm grown up and mature. So I don't, I don't just complain. You're bigger than your man. Grow up. Just complaining, gossip, baseball, thrift store, even on the paper, like, mind your business. You know, I don't mind my own business, but now I just have to come out. I don't want to create no mania or, but that's the way it is. But as you all want, thank you, thank you. Back to both the team, both of you, having both the love of the year.
Next one is, I think it's the Royal.
Yeah, I'll wait for the public hearing.
Isaac Romero.
Is it the public hearing?
Oh, it's him.
Yeah, I guessed.
Sarah Swati Palsa. Do you want me to spell it for you? Sarah Swati is one new word. S-A-R-A-S-W-A-T-I. And the last name is Palsa. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Sarah Swati Palsa. I'm a 20-year resident in Espaola, which I know is not very long. I'm going to grant a few of thanks here. I wanted to come and speak on behalf of Lauren Reichel and urge you to appoint her as city manager. And how many people are here to support Lauren? Can you stand? Thank you. I first met Lauren when COVID was a new and scary virus that nobody understood much about. And at the time, there was a shortage of medical equipment, masks especially. And Lauren jumped into action. She coordinated community members, including myself, to start Rosie the Respirators. And we gathered fabric and we sewed masks and we delivered them to vulnerable people. And I don't know how many people we actually protected from the virus with those masks. But the important thing is that it's a perfect illustration of why Lauren is a good candidate for city manager. She saw a problem. She figured out a novel way to organize the community to help. And she modeled the important role that administrators and local governments play to solve problems and protect people, even when limited resources are available, which I know is often the case in Espaola. I also believe that her experience in public health administration is exceptionally important for Espaola at this time. Drug abuse is a public health issue. Addiction requires treatment and systemic change to address the root causes of illness. Addiction requires treatment and systemic change to address the root causes of illness. Espanola needs Lauren's expertise now more than ever. She's professional, she's experienced, she understands this community, and she's willing to serve, which is not a small thing. So, I hope you will appoint her, and thank you all for serving.
That concludes public comment.
Moving on to the public hearing, I am going to refuse myself at this point, and Mayor Potem Justin S. Porras will proceed over the meeting.
Alrighty, good evening, Buenos Aires everybody, fellow colleagues. Uh, we're moving on to item eight here on our agenda, which is our public hearing. At this time, uh, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Uh, the public hearing is a request for approval of liquor license D I S dash zero zero three eight four, transfer of ownership from the estate of Antonia Quintana, D B A Club Tropicana to Rio Grande Liquors LLC, D B A Tropicana Bar and Liquor, license located at five two three eight Paseo de Oñata Street here in Espanola, New Mexico, eight seven five three two. Uh, just the way we're going to go about this public hearing is we're going to open the public hearing. Those that are in favor or opposed to speak for the public hearing, we're going to ask you to stand when the public hearing is open. Uh, the deputy clerk will, um, give you the witness to be sworn in statement, and then we will begin, okay? Already, it is now... Alright, it is now six forty-eight. I open the public hearing. Already, those that wish to speak, speak in favor or against.
Sally will be.
Sally will be, okay.
As our, um, non-public.
Okay, perfect. So, give us just a couple seconds, I guess, until Sally gets in here. Our name is Baxter, he's here. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, those that are here in, uh, to speak in favor or in opposition of this public hearing, uh, please stand. Alrighty, and Miss Sally, I'll hand it over to you.
Do you have the list to name, or shall I just call up the individuals who are here? You can swear your name.
You can sort of, it's okay.
Do each of you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth? Raise your hands, thank you.
Yes.
Do you agree to tell the truth, the whole truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Miss Sally. We appreciate that. Alrighty, now, um, now the public hearing is open, and we'll call on the applicant, applicant, those in favor.
Who are you calling to advocate for?
Oh.
Okay. Your name is?
Edward Marquez.
Go ahead.
We want to speak.
Yes, sir, I just want to, yes, just go ahead and speak. You came up to speak, correct?
Well, yeah, it's like, it's been twenty years since I've been here.
Okay, just go ahead and say whatever you want, or just...
A lot of people there just know me, I've been here thirty years, thirty-nine years. I came from California to help the family business, I'm not a piano teacher, I mean, I'm thirty-eight years old, I'm thirty-nine, I've been a little bit mentioned sometimes, but, you know, at the time, I felt, you know, bad news. My parents were ninety-eight, and so I helped them. I've done a lot of times, just a lot of people, there are these that would be, I, okay. I, I'm pretty good with faces, but I'm terrible with names. And, and wherever I go, people say, hi, Mr. Dead, how are you? And when you're going to reopen in Tropicana? I'll be eighty years old here in about three weeks, and for the last five years, I've had failing health. And that's one of the main reasons, because of my age, I should have retired maybe fifteen years ago. But because of my health, I, in five years, I had four operations, in two weeks, I had two operations. I had more metal in my body than they have in these new vehicles. And I've got carrying cars, and I went to the airports, I don't think I'm terrible. Anyway, uh, I've had a lot of ups and downs in my life, I've had a lot, a lot of downs taking care of the Tropicana for the family, along the last one, and, uh, I decided on selling, oh, maybe about three years ago. And, uh, the pandemic had a lot to do with it. We were probably the last bar, one of the last bars in casinos that had survived. And it took me, I had to take out a loan to the Mexico Finance Authority, I had to do a lot of things to keep it going. I had borrowed money, I put money that I had saved over the years to keep going. Anyway, I decided, after my ass passed, my son, he was going to take over, but he's a policeman, he's from Texas now, and he said, Dad, if you would have called me maybe two years ago, I would have done it. But they're very happy down there, they own the schools, they, he had a great job, he's a policeman down there, and his wife, uh, she was, uh, she runs a supermarket, he's Japanese. So consequently, there's a lot of factors involved. So when I put the business up for sale three years ago, or two years, no, two years ago, uh, I put out the word to Richard Osaro, I put out the word to Daniel Garcia, people that I know that might be interested to hobby or, Jorge, pardon me, Jorge with, with El Rey Liquors. And there was a couple other people that came forward when we were inviting on that I was looking to sell the business. Well, finally, after a period of time, okay, come July first of last year, I closed up the Tropicana for one year, because I had gotten behind on state taxes and everything, and it was either close it up or lose everything. And I'm the personal representative for the estate of Antonia Quintana, and, uh, I also own the triple S store, so we're succeeding this store, and then I lived right behind the Tropicana. But I didn't want to lose everything. So, I, I had heard through the grapevine that, uh, Mr. De Hill here might be interested in buying the Tropicana. And one day, I was in there paying the water bill, and he came out, said, Mr. Marquez, I've been trying to get ahold of you. And I thought to myself, well, why would the city, I thought he was actually representing the cities that buy the Tropicana, because we've been there sixty-two or sixty-three years. But I come to find out, it's this family, the Salazar De Hill family, and I've known many, many members of that family over the years. The Quintana family, which, my uncle Joe Lada, who was a, a Batan prisoner of war, he started it in nineteen sixty-two. And then he sold it to my aunt, I believe in nineteen eighty-two, because he was probably getting old and tired, and, uh, the war took a lot out of him. Anyway, consequently, they called me, if I come over here for one week in nineteen eighty-eight, and I said, sure, I need to see my relatives, because I hadn't seen them in a long time. And so I came over the one week, well, that one week became two. And they told me, they said, we love what you did here, which I don't know what I did, I just, I've been a people person, I've been, I was raised, my dad was from Ranchitos, and my mom was from the west side here. And I was raised to respect people, to treat them good, and if you treat them good, they'll treat you good. And I always believed in that, but being, knowing the facts of life, I know at nineteen, when the first time that somebody didn't treat me good, and I, I got upset, I realized that life is not a bowl of cherries. So ever since then, and being, also being from Los Angeles area, I realize that when you're dealing around a lot of drug addicts and alcoholics, they're not the nicest people in the world. And so you've got to, in order to gain respect from them, you've got to be leaner than they are. And a lot of people, well, when they see me how I normally am, they say, oh, you're a wonderful person. But when they see me mean, they see, oh, Mr. Dead, we didn't do it like that. And I just go, well, that's, I have to be. Well, consequently, I'll make a long story short, when, uh, when John here approached me, we talked, and he impressed me with the way that he wanted to operate the Tropicana, to keep it in the city, because we've been here for so long, I don't know if you, if you all remember that I think about. I think it was last year sometime, or maybe, no, what year, twenty-five, right? Yeah, but I think it was early part of this year, uh, I accepted a proclamation from the city for being there for so long, taking care of things and so forth. And ever since then, I feel, well, we've been for that, I feel like a celebrity in this town, because wherever I go, Mr. Ed, Mr. Ed, how are you? And I look at him like, I gotta know you, but it's gotta be from the Tropicana, because I never get out. I mean, you're one of the best, you're successful, you're married to that business. And, and so, olden years, I'd learned that, when I talked to John about his plans of operating the Tropicana, it fell in the line of what I was looking for, because some of the owners, some of them, I mean, it's not the owners, but some of the people that were looking to buy the Tropicana, they weren't the best people in the world. They had other plans, like, we, okay. So, I kind of, we didn't love that, but there was two others that I was seriously thinking about, but they didn't really, they, they weren't, they didn't impress me that much. This man impressed me, because he was very honest with me, I could say, I've known his family, I, I met his mother, his mother is a wonderful, beautiful person, and, and the family, uh, Mr. De Hill, I know him, for, for now, off and on, and, uh, and I enjoy, you've been, you've been a city councilor for a number of years, a number of years. Oh, there you are, okay. See, I, I, maybe I'm not so good with faces anymore, but anyway. Well, yeah, I, no. To me, to me, there's a lot of younger people here in this, my age too, so, uh, I get confused sometimes. But I realize that I'm not the man I used to be. I cannot, I cannot continue, uh, operating the business because of my family. But also, I have, I have four kids, and they're not kids, they're fifty-six to forty-five, and I have six grandkids, and three or four great-grandkids, and they're in other states, and I want to spend more time with them. So, right now, John and I are working together to try to keep the Tropicana going, because when I can't, last thing's the best way, to keep our many people, why don't we, we sell the license? And I said, yeah, yeah, I said, we sell the license, that's where it's going to be. It's an old building, nobody's going to want to do anything, it's going to be like a lot of these old buildings, it's way in town, and that's where they're, so, my plans, to be honest with everybody, is trying to sell it, or, like, we're not selling it for this, because I want to spend time with my family that I have left, that I have left. And so, and with me, time is more important than money, because my heart stopped about, I don't know, six, seven years ago, I passed, my wife passed when I was ninety, and I realized, I thank God, and so, I think there's three times in my lifetime I should have been there and I stopped here. My first time is back in thirty-five, and my last one, I think, I don't know, maybe, maybe my early seventies or late sixties, I can't remember. But they were flying me to Albuquerque, and they couldn't, because they didn't think I'd make it, so they rushed me down to St. Vincent's on that night, for my sense of my heart. I have a pacemaker, I have two milk hips, I have another fork in my shoulders, and I think that's it, I can't, it might be something else, I'm not sure. But, but a long story short, I'm working with John, and he's a county attorney, and, and I'm trying to teach him the business, because this is something you just don't learn overnight. If you want to be a succession, you're going to quote your father, you know, it really ends up, because he plays on my head fifteen and forty's, now, well, now I haven't had any, but before I closed up, I had to build a doctor too. And I just, that's all I have to say. If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask me. If not, well, thank you very much for my...
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you, I'd like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. The Tropicana is Espanola's oldest bar and liquor store, since nineteen sixty-two. It's one of the oldest liquor licenses in the community, and it's been held in trust by the Quintana family since nineteen sixty-two. You know, I, I started talking with Mr. Marquez about this opportunity, because I was very concerned last summer when Tropicana closed down, because it, it is an icon of the west side. There was a time when there was about eighteen bars here in Espanola, and for that purpose, I was more concerned about another empty and abandoned building on the west side of the city. And if there's anything, I believe, I believe in the development of the west side of the city. I stake my future on it, and I'm willing to make that investment, potentially down the road, I'd like to also acquire the triple S from Mr. Marquez, and we developed that property as the only independently owned gas station left in Espanola. It's so important for the development of this valley that we come together, because I fear that, that the tribe will pick up this property, which Mr. Chris Marquez actually was discussing possibly working with them. And it's so important when we have people step up to maintain private ventures, this liquor license more than likely would have left Espanola and would have lost the gross receipts tax revenue permanently. Once a liquor license leaves the municipality, it will never come back to the municipality back as a full dispenser license, it becomes an inter-dispenser license. It's so important for this community because of what the Tropicana means to the community. It has a long story, sixty-three years of being the host for weddings, uh, birthdays, funerals, graduation parties for countless individuals from across the valley. And more importantly, because of the demographic we serve, we make it affordable, as an affordable venue place for the community to utilize. I have big plans for, for fixing up the facility, making it a wraparound facility that's nice and attainable for all social activities, and expanding it more than just a bar, and looking at more as a well-rounded social gathering space for our community, and specifically here for the west side of Espanola. I've staked my future in this valley, I believe in the west side, I believe there's so much potential here. I'm a fourth generation of this side of town, and like Mr. Marquez, um, I couldn't bear to see another abandoned building here in our community, and I'm glad he brought up that story about Antonia. Thank you.
Alrighty, ladies and gentlemen, uh, now, we will have those folks that would like to speak in favor, uh, for this public hearing, those that would like to speak, uh, we do ask that you state your full name, uh, we don't need your middle name, but state your name, uh, your address, and/or contact information, so those that would like to speak in favor, uh, please come forward.
City councilman, city councilwoman, my name is Leroy Rodriguez, and I used to be a proprietor of a liquor store here in the eighties, and I do frequently go to the Tropicana back in the days. I'm in favor for this opportunity for him to have this liquor license here. Back in the days, I knew the Quintana family because of a prior, my dad knowing him, then as another proprietor of a liquor store. Back in the day, the Tropicana, like he was saying, uh, there was a nice, lot of nice things in there, you could go play pool and have a nice drink, talk about it, and not only that, back in the day, it was for counting votes, here in the city, and also in the river of town, and I remember those days. Anyway, I am in favor for this, and thank you.
Good evening, my name is Floyd Richletta. I live in, at Six Love Cabina Santa Cruz in Espanola, in Espanola. I'm here tonight representing our Yates Santa Cruz, um... I'm here tonight representing our Yates Santa Cruz neighborhood. And I'm here to speak in support of the request for approval of liquor license DIS-00384. As you, I think pretty much everybody knows me. But I grew up here on the west side of town, I'm a property owner here. And I'm very familiar with this business. And I'm glad that it's still around. And to my knowledge, I don't think that we've ever had any, any real problems at all because of this business in our community. As I had served on the city council for twenty years, and I've never been aware of any problems that we've had. I know also the fact that this city needs the grocery receipts revenues that businesses like the Tropicana bring to the city. That's very important. We keep losing businesses, and others opening up that the city doesn't generate grocery receipts from. And until those days change, and we start getting those grocery receipts again, I'm glad that this business, I hope, will continue in operation, and that the city will benefit from these grocery receipts. The people that have operated the business in the past, I totally respect. Mr. Behill, who is looking at operating this business, I totally respect that he will do a good job in managing and operating that business as well. So, again, I'm here to speak in favor of the action that's before you tonight. And I want to also congratulate all of you for serving in your capacities. I know some of these situations that you're facing these days, we never faced those in the twenty years I was there. And I don't envy some of the challenges that you face, but I have confidence that you all will do the right thing for our city. And I want to congratulate and thank you for all of you. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, thank you, Peggy, for your service. My name is Isaac Pomet. Thank you, Peggy, for your service, for dedication, and especially for your friendship. I am here in behalf, excellent support of the Tropicana nightclub, which is considered a landmark in Espanola. This is probably one of the last two bars that exists or have survived. Back in the day, in the sixties, when I managed to work for the city, there was approximately twenty bars at the time. There was just two remaining bars left. So, I am in support, and I believe that the city cannot afford to lose another business. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the vote here?
I just have a question.
Sir, could you say it?
Oh, yes, leave it. I just have a question. Why do you have this, if you support it or disapprove?
Unfortunately, Mr. Ley, but we cannot discuss that right now or answer questions.
I'd like to know why. You know, I'm in favor for the mayor being the one who buy it. You know, mine, like me, an example, you know? I'm gonna bust on my truck. Now, I have to come over here and get approval that I can.
Anyone, any other folks who would like to speak in favor? All right, we'll open up the floor now to those, anyone that would like to speak against.
Name, Bratney, and I live at eleven-six Riverside Drive. I'm only against this for one reason, because I believe that somebody who's leader, literally, the leader of this city as a mayor, in a town where addiction is overwhelming this town, and taking over households, the streets, drug dealing and everything else, to be a pillar of this community as a mayor, you shouldn't promote alcohol, because alcohol, as we all know, is also an addiction and is killing multiple people in this town. Ask any medical facility. Last thing we need is another bar, the first thing we need is more help. So, turning it into a different type of facility as opposed to another bar or another place to buy alcohol and add to the addiction that goes on in this town, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna be opposed to it.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak against?
My name is Steven Lona, everyone knows me here. God bless you, God bless you. I just wanna know if this building is actually up to code or not. We did an NIPR request, oh, we did an NIPR request for us, regarding the new owners, their business license, the liquor license information, the inspections. We got denied all that stuff, stating that city had it on record. We got an email back stating that no fire inspection has been inspected, which is, I don't know what's going on, I don't know, I'm getting a public record. Well, anyways, the other reason is, John's business has been operating since back in July first. Where's September? August, September. This little thing should have happened back in May or June. He's been owning this business since July. I don't know where you guys are entertaining it now. He's been in business since July. There's a lot of things going on with his LLCs. I'll be posting that information tomorrow. I couldn't get it all on tech, because I was doing other stuff. But I'm totally against what John's trying to do. Also, it's considered a conflict of interest as well, as a nonprofit official owning a business. Mr. Popovich should know about that. That's it. I already forgot, there's another question. See, I go by minutes, I forget, you can talk as long as you can. So, is it gonna, are you guys, oh, never mind, did you guys answer? I guess that's it.
All righty, ladies and gentlemen, anybody that would like to speak in favor or against for this public hearing? We'll leave it open.
I'll leave it open.
Please.
Like anything else in life, if I need to, you know. Like anything in life, there's always two sides to a story. And in any relationship, whether it's a job, whether it's a marriage, making kids, going to church, anything like that, there's always a plus and a minus. A lot of times, a lot of people don't know the plus. And if people know the plus, then they do something about it. Same way with the minus. And this is where we all have to make a decision to find out the truth. Now, I'm hearing a lot of things that people don't know about, things that we're doing behind the scenes to make sure that everything's fine. Fire department has come by, and they have checked the facility. And they told us, "Don't need to do anything to it." Get everything up to court.
Oh, shit, John looks here.
And then another thing, too, we're doing everything we can. We've already been okay with the state of New Mexico alcohol on pain, like tax escrow revenue. There's two licenses right now, Mr. Chavez's and mine. The state of Antonia Quintana, right now, is still operating under my direction, okay? Until it's finalized, then it'll be transferred over to him, whether it takes three months, six months, or a year, okay? And I've already offered my services to John. I'm an employee. I'm not running, but I'm giving him his valuable advice, or my valuable advice to him, so that he can make the right decisions to make sure that it's been operating the same way it has in the last sixty-two or sixty-three years. Every once in a while, we have a little problem. But we always take care of our own problems, because sometimes, if you don't police your own establishment, by the time the police get there, it's too late. So, over the years, and a lot of people know that we mean business when we're there. We tell you, "We're having a problem with you," they have a lot. We don't stand for any nonsense. And that's why, like, over the years, a lot of people, I kicked them out, and said, "You know what? You're banned for life." And just recently, since I got retired, it was possible, I had to sneak back in for approval. And when the guys told me, "That's all, send it back in here." Then I went over there, and I told them, "No, I'm not here, and you're trying to come back in." I said, "That's not a man." And it's not gonna happen with this dude, Alloso. Matter of fact, he happened to be there that night. And I told him, I said, "This man is banned for life." And it's the same way, because, well, we get a lot of people, they come in there and try to shop there. The manager calls me, "I own the building, I own the property, but the business is actually in class, the prison that runs it." And they call me and say they have a problem. By the way, I go, "They see me, they can't go." If they don't want to have to deal with me. And that's where you have to be sometimes, when you, and I agree with you. We all have problems with alcohol and drugs and everything else. But it's all that way, all over the United States and the world. Ever since the pandemic, I spent half time right in Los Angeles, and not the best parts of Los Angeles. I've seen a lot. But over there, they try to stop alcohol by raising property taxes, and that's it. Over here, they try to sell alcohol, they're running dry, and we close the drive-in. It's, we don't say, we're real, but it's a real way. And that's what people find. And we're not, we're all innovative. One street doesn't fit off, you can't blame everybody who run that out in the boroughs. So, that's the only thing I want to know. If you want to find out the truth, you need to investigate. Whatever the matter is, whether it's this matter or any other matter. And one of the things I, we ran into someone, Rhea Garcia, was, which we laid out, fifteen years ago, that she handed me, said, "This man, you come in California, what do you see that difference here? How come you can't, how come you can't forget?" And I turned up, so, "One, one thing is, you don't have them jobs here. Number two, even if you have jobs here, there's no housing." Number three. Oh, huh? Okay. See, I, to be honest with you, I heard a lot of them. But the thought of it is, and I can get to talking sometimes, you can't shut them down. I think my, my girl, she would talk me well, after the talk. But anyway, because I have to do the same thing with them. But real quick, the thing is, you know.
We're operating under the state of Antonia Quintana license. We started this process back in Maine. We received preliminary approval from the state on July twenty-nine, in accordance with the Liquor Control Act. It was advertised for forty-five days, and here we are, forty-five days from July twenty-nine, for the next scheduled hearing. And so, that's in accordance with the Liquor Control Act and the requirements and such regarding that. And then now, it comes to the local option district.
All right, the public hearing is still open. Those that would like to speak in favor or opposition of this public hearing, please come forward. These folks, search for the mic.
Excuse me, what's your name?
No, this one served, that one unfortunately won't work. But just please state your name and your address and your contact information, please.
My name is Cidravargas. My name is Cidravargas. I know this family for many, many years, and I know, I've taught you, the council people here. I respect you for what you do. Give this man a chance. When I see this gentleman right here speak of his family, he has been an icon, not only for what he is saying about his family being who they are. I know Manny, Laa, Allo, Ayu, I was a kid, when I grew up with him. What this gentleman's trying to do to buy this, I say, approve it. We are losing too much here in Espanola. We are losing too much. Do you want the tribes to buy it? I think that's wrong. Espanola is losing its religion and its right to be who we are. Approve it. Thank you for buying.
All righty, we'll leave the public hearing open just for a couple more minutes. Anybody that would like to speak in favor or opposition of the public hearing, please step forward.
Sorry.
Leave it open just a few more seconds. Again, anybody in favor or opposition of the public hearing, please step forward. All righty, ladies and gentlemen, it is now seven twenty-four. This public hearing is now closed. All righty, this is an administrative adjudicatory hearing. Fellow colleagues, we do have an action item below this public hearing, or for this public hearing. The governing body may enter into executive session, should the governing body decide to do so. I will entertain a motion from this governing body. Well, we do have either or. We do have an action item, and we do have executive session as an option. I will entertain a motion from this governing body. All righty, we have a motion to approve from Councilor Archivatatoya, and a second from Councilor Nanette Rodriguez. For discussion purposes, I will open up this dice. Councilors. Councilor Do.
I am familiar with the Tropicana, as a former Northern student. Places, you know, lost steam after finals. And, you know, I think that it is important that we do keep these type of businesses alive despite some of the social drawbacks. I do think that bars over the years have evolved and have found ways to help with some of the issues caused by the addiction of alcohol. I urge Mr. Behill to look into some of these things. One of them would be to create a hotline to One of them would be to create a hotline to allow customers who may be struggling with alcoholism to ban themselves from the facility. We see this in casinos all the time. And putting a number maybe somewhere in the bar that says, "If you're struggling, call the number, we'll ban, we'll let you ban yourself." And we just won't let you get liquor at this establishment. I think that that's one good way to address one of those issues. The other is having a strict limit depending on the type of alcohol served. Usually bartenders are really good at that judgment call, but setting a firm line in the sand will allow patrons to understand, especially, you know, with the high D W I rates, ways to combat that issue. And there's several other things that have been, you know, over the years that have started to improve. I know that there's also other implements and items people can buy to make sure that drinks are not messed with or stuff like that. And I think that, you know, it's hard for some of these family-owned bars to keep up with that stuff. But with a new owner in mind and looking towards the future of having to combat this issue, I know Mr. Behill cares about this community and knows many of the people in it. And the last thing I think he would want to see is someone die from alcoholism. So I hope that he implements some of these strategies to try to combat this issue and keep the Tropicana as alive as it possibly be. Those are only my suggestions. I do think it's important to keep these type of businesses in the city. I do think having businesses stay in the city limits, they're going to pay G R T to help us move the city forward, is important. And I do understand where some of the concerns are when it comes to controlled substances. So, that's all I have to say.
All right, I see another house. Well, enough, Madam Deputy, please call the hall.
May I approach him, Justin Salazar Torres?
With due respect, I will yield myself to my fellow colleagues as well.
Counselor Felicia Archuleta Toya?
In favor.
Counselor Pedro Valdez?
Yes.
Counselor Peggy Su Martinez?
Oh, pass him up here.
Counselor Samuel Ledoux?
In favor.
Counselor Denise Benavides?
In favor.
Counselor Aaron Salazar?
In favor.
Counselor Manette Rodriguez?
Yes, in favor.
Counselor Peggy Su Martinez?
Against.
Um, Mayor Porton, Justin Salazar Torres?
In favor. Thank you. I will, motion passes, seven to one. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, six to one. My mouth is not nothing. Seven to one, see, my mouth ain't nothing. Seven to one, I will return to seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Items proposed for council consideration, discussion items, action items. Reconnect Program, Community Project Funding, Congressional Direct Expendings, City of Estanola, Mike Adams. I know he's not here, Diana, he's got a letter to reiterate.
He did, and he has not to use the tab.
All of them here, Bill.
This, um...
I think that's what makes America great, we all have our own reason. Is there any, they're in session?
My question is, is that Mike, does he know Mike Adams? I'm concerned what he did tell me to, for speaking his behalf. This is for the Reconnect Program for the library that was approved by the government of the city. In a nutshell, basically, they want a hundred makes up and a hundred made value to the possible first, because of the capacity to do that. We also don't have the funding to start this program because it's going to cost the city several hundred thousand dollars, which we do not have at the time. So, he wanted to disseminate back to the council. This goes back from several meetings ago. So, I will yield for any questions that I can try to answer.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, I guess, the advice Mike Adams is saying, you know, this is phase two of the project. You don't have funding for phase one. With his advice and his funding, I don't want the funding go. I guess my question would be, if I may, how long do we have to give an answer to this before we have that? Because then we just need to turn it over so the folks can use it if they've got the money for it.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Porton, I do not know that, but I do know that he's exploring other funding sources to try and get this going after that. I think a lot of the problem, to begin with, was the easements that we have to go through different nearby purpose to get the fiber and all that to that, to the, to, those points to the main point of transmission.
I needed the right of ways, my...
Correct, yes.
Counselor Valdez and then we'll come to the Duke.
Well, I just want to say that this is a project that got eight hundred thousand dollars, and we should try and continue and looking for it. Because I know that there's people that want to have this done. And if we can look for money, I think he's going to try and fund it. So, I wouldn't want us to just kick the bucket a little further. I think we should try it. If not, it can come back to the council and deny whatever they have to work for.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor, Counselor Valdez, I think that's his goal and his intent. I think it just, again, the funding for it, because we, you know, you guys know what the J R Ts look like, we don't have that funding right now, but he's exploring to try and get that money.
Motion to table this.
Okay, motion to...
Motion to table this for further down the road. Hopefully by the time this comes back up, I'd like to look at it at the quarter or at the half year and see what our finances looks like at that time. I think it's important to continue these efforts.
Motion to table, Counselor Peggy Su Martinez, second by Mayor Porton, Justin Salazar Torres. Is there, there's no discussion, a motion to table. All in favor, motion taken by saying aye?
Aye.
Is the opposition indicate the inside?
No.
Two, so there's two no's. And there's...
Just clarification, Counselor Valdez. I'm not asking that we not do this. I'm asking that we provide the staff with a timetable to allow for them to do and look for that funding. That's what the motion is for.
I, I just want to let you know that, that he's been trying to get this across and get grants. And if we continue to say, telling him, "Well, let's wait for something else." But I think we don't need the money in the budget yet until we know what it is, but we have to let him know to try it.
Mr. Mayor, a motion second's been made, and a vote has been made. You'll have to move to another motion, similar or subsequent.
We'll move on.
But I didn't get the second no, I have Counselor Du voting for it.
Felicia.
Hold it, okay.
Counselor Archuleta.
There's Counselor Valdez.
There's Counselor Valdez and Counselor Archuleta Toya that voted no.
Counselor Valdez and Counselor Du.
Yeah.
Counselor, oh, okay.
We hardly need these votes, folks. All right, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash five-seven, a resolution authorizing the removal of ninety-six thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents of uncollectible utility account amounts from accounts receivable to bad debt general ledger account, presented by, I guess, Adam, Adam Bailey.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Porton, governing body, what you have put forward, you is a resolution to recommend, to request the removal of ninety-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Motion made by Counselor Peggy Su Martinez, second by Counselor Justin, Mayor Porton, Counselor Justin Salazar Torres, under discussion.
Mr. Bailey, as you're quite aware on the Finance Committee, I do have some concerns about this. I wanted to see if there's been any effort in the time that we approved this at the Finance Committee till today, to see if we could collect any more of that debt, particularly with some of the larger entities such as businesses and such that are the lead point on the debt. Has there been any effort since that meeting?
Honorable Mayor, Counselor Ledoux, and so, I do have, and I didn't want to publish it for public use, but I did have a list of all of the actions that have been taken, like a list of names, phone numbers, and addresses of those properties. However, I didn't want to, you know, publish that information for public, so I do have that available upon request. So, everything that they went through, they made multiple attempts. If there was not a phone number that they weren't able to contact, then that was the end of the actual collection string. However, she has multiple times, she attempts to collect the debt. And so, I do have this spreadsheet, I can provide it to your office, and it shows what actions were taken for collection.
Mr. Bailey, I'm aware, we've had several meetings about this. I think he actually came to council once and was actually tabled and went back to committee, and we've seen the list of the names. I'm wondering, since the last committee meeting, has there been any attempt by the Finance Office to collect the debt that we, that we expressed concerns about before it came back to the full council?
Counselor Ledoux, so, I, I honestly, I do not have that answer. So I do know that she's made multiple attempts, and she makes multiple attempts daily, but I can't give you like specifics that are on this list, because it's over four years.
She did collect over three thousand dollars from the last meeting out to pulling some money. And it's utilities, we don't do the call of the grounds, it's utilities, but they made about three thousand plus in them coming back together.
Counselors Salazar Torres.
Uh, thank you. So we've done some diligence and tried to collect and resolve some of these accounts. Just to make that clear, that we've attempted to do so. All right, thank you.
Counselor Valdez?
Motion to go ahead and ask for...
We've already been motioning second, under discussion right now, please.
Well, I just want to say that I think we should continue probably the collections, but at the same time, we can put this aside from the finance.
Counselor Ledoux?
Uh, follow-up on Counselor Valdez's comments. Mr. Bailey, once this debt is, once we remove this debt, there's no way we can collect it, correct?
Counselor Ledoux, that is not correct. So, this debt is moved over into, there's a bad debt line item within, just for proper accounting. So we have a bad debt line item within the enterprise fund. And so, if anyone did attempt to correct on that debt, or anyone attempted to pay on that debt, we would be able to reinstate it, and be able to make that payment as well.
Okay, that, that gives me a lot more reassurance. I wish I would have known that early on. I would have probably been more supportive of this move. I, so, just to clear this up, if we vote on this tonight, this is moved to a bad debt line item, that we can show the auditors that we are still attempting to collect this debt, but for whatever reason, we can't collect it currently. And so, we're putting efforts into collecting different debt that we can assume is more likely to be paid. Is that correct?
Honorable Mayor, Counselor Ledoux, that is correct. And so, it's, basically, it's to reduce the receivable, and so, we're not expecting that money. And so, we're not, you know, we're not trying to budget on money that we're not, that's not really, you know, feasible to collect, and it's within the books. And so, yes, we can collect on it. However, it's more so for like an accounting perspective, receivables expected, just so we're not counting on that money immediately.
I appreciate that, Mr. Bailey, because the way that this was sold in the past was that we were basically going to zero out that debt and move forward as if that debt was no longer going to be collected. So if you're saying, if that is the case, then I'm far more in support of this move. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Still under discussion, we'll get to it, please, call the hall.
May I approach him, Justin Salazar Torres?
In favor.
Counselor Felicia Archuleta Toya?
In favor.
Counselor Pedro Valdez?
Yes.
Counselor Peggy Su Martinez?
In favor.
Counselor Samuel Ledoux?
In favor.
Counselor Denise Benavides?
In favor.
Counselor Aaron Salazar?
In favor.
Counselor Manette Rodriguez?
Another motion.
Motion passes, the eight zero.
City of Estanola Budgeting Performance Presentation, Pat Madilla.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Porton, governing body, before me today, I present a presentation for the platform OpenGov. And so, we brought this over to the, we brought this over to the Finance Committee. The Finance Department has been looking for alternatives for, to be able to look for more transparent budgeting platforms. And we came across the company OpenGov. OpenGov, it is nice because we currently utilize them for our procurement suite, whom we're currently going through implementation. And so, this will, this, the key benefits of OpenGov currently is, it's a cloud-based, and so, we're able to, and just sort of reporting the results, et cetera. And so, you know, you can grant access to specific people, they're able to run reports, create reports. Also, the thing that I really like is because it's cloud-based, the public will also be able to review a budget book as well. And so, I really believe that that brings back transparency to the city, not only for the public, but also for each department as well, because the budgeting, the budgeting process will be more collaborative. Each department will be...
Under discussion, Counselor, your vote is under discussion, Counselor Ledoux?
I have to say, Mr. Bailey, you brought this to us for our attention at the Finance Committee, we have two meetings on it. And we had a lot of good discussion about this platform. I had the pleasure of talking to some of the other cities that use it and looking at it myself. And I think that this is an excellent way to go forward. It provides a really in-depth analysis of each individual line item to the public. It provides real-time accounting. It'll also help our other departments, as they'll be able to see in real time how money is being spent and how money is being moved, so that the public is more confident in how their money is being spent. Other departments can look at other budgets and reflect their budgets accordingly. And we, as counselors, can see in real time what is happening. That way, we don't have to wait for the umpteenth hour at a meeting to have something printed out. We could just go on our phone and look really quick to see where money is at. I think that this is an excellent platform, and I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
I know this contract will be drawn.
Absolutely. Honorable Mayor, Counselor Martinez, and so, this will be over three different line items. We'll be pulling this out of the finance, partial of the finance budget within contractual services. We'll also be pulling that out of central administration. And then, because there is also a project management portion, we'll also be pulling that also from partial enterprise funds as well.
One thirty?
It'll be, so there's going to be, there's a, two of the, so it should be a fourth of each. Because we'll be pulling from finance, from central admin, from water, and from, sorry.
So you'll split the enterprise between the two entities?
Correct, yes.
Water and sewer being two?
Water, sewer, are we also doing race water? Just go running this one? Just go on water and wastewater? Water wastewater, I apologize.
Water and wastewater?
Yes.
So this says that the system is based on a completed agreement before August thirty-first?
Uh, so I do have an updated, um, the, at, at the time, this was when we presented it initially to the finance committee. And so I did receive an updated, an updated quote. If we were to proceed, we'd be utilizing the ONGIA contract. And so there, um, we'd be able to utilize that cooperative purchasing that way. Um, and then, um, the updated quote that I have is, is, I believe, three thousand dollars less. However, I can receive that quote prior to the deadline to get this...
So the concern that I have is this is ten months beginning September first or September twenty-third today. Uh, ten months times four weeks per, per month is forty months. We're actually three, three weeks that we didn't have them on this month. So that would mean three weeks out of those forty, each month is costing us two thousand ninety dollars. The three weeks that we haven't had them would account for six thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. So I'm wondering if they're, the, being that their start date is later than had it been anticipated by this not coming to a... If they would, if they would break it down, why don't they keep it down?
Um, so I can provide, I, I do have a quote and I, it'll be right, so I can run it right now.
Please do.
Absolutely. It's, um, I believe it's eighty thousand dollars though is the reduced price.
Still...
Let me bring it.
This weekend, uh, Friday, if you could wear our purple and white shirt. I've been scattered. We're getting feedback. Either leg. Good thing I have scents in my car for executive session.
Mr. Bailey, just for the record as well, can you state, uh, I'm sure we paid an existing cost for current budgeting software that this would replace, correct? Have you spayed some of the expenses that we've already paid on existing software and how this will replace them?
Honorable Mayor, uh, Councilor Du, uh, so we currently are utilizing that Cassell as our ERP. And so we would continue to have our ERP Cassell just because it's our, our record. And so there wouldn't be any type of, they would work in conjunction with each other. Um, we, we'd still, what, what's happening is, uh, we'd continue to have our ERP and then every night the OpenGov platform would upload into the system. And so they would never charge. And so it's, unfortunately, there are any savings there. Um, I, I can reach out to Cassell and see if there's any way that we can use data and possibly do something that way. However, with the way that it would be configured, there wouldn't be any type of, um, any type of savings.
So just for the contact information, the total of eighty thousand eight twenty-two twenty-six?
That is correct, that is best of the first of July.